This is a lot. Do you want to scoot around?
No, it's fine. No, I'm good. I just. It's not bad. When you have the whole side. What? My mind. They left their.
Four minds, they die.
Great.
Four minds, okay. I saw that. That's for a shot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, um, so can I ask? Where did you order?
I don't remember, but I forgot.
The place in Portland. What a mailing. You know, I really like this guy, this guy in. It's the master. I think she. Like class. And my bees I got. Were nice. I mean, I'm sure. And then I got some aggressive ones.
Not here officially.
I just. I could go over to.
I'd like them very much.
Well, I said that from like the old. The D O T. Oh, good, good. That's awesome. And they're going to allow that amendment to go, isn't it? Is it like? Oh, good.
I get that. Getting.
Well, that makes absolute sense.
Second to new.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no, that's. It was half and half. No, that's, that's really good.
Well, how's it come so far? The cost at school.
How many years, how many years are you going back on that? You can go back retro on tips. Well, you used to do it too. Going to go back on that?
We can because we didn't have a position.
Well, and just in tip and captain that rather than from years past.
Oh, yeah.
You should inquire about that because that could be significant.
Yeah.
Past couple of years.
Yep.
I didn't want to tell you that anymore.
Yeah, no, that's great.
So we're, we're working with you. At since I don't think they have them in the future.
Oh, is that what it is?
I think they allow.
Okay. Why don't they all thoroughly read them?
No, no, test. State has a, a unique thing. But I don't think, I mean, I'm sure allows towns to do test site pretty wrong. There are other mechanisms that are more controlled by the state. Well, it's not a matter of even know like that. Well, we are at past seven o'clock. So why don't we call the meeting to order? And so with that being said, I'll ask that everybody rise and pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance.
The Black of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands. A nation under God. Invisible.
Good evening and welcome everybody to the February first planning board meeting. You know, we move into the meeting. I'll ask if there's any public comments here in the audience and then I'll ask. Those on Zoom if there's any comments there. So is there any public comment by members of the audience? Okay, is there any comment by anybody on Zoom? Is there anybody on Zoom or in the audience that wishes to reserve time to speak on any other agenda item? Or once, twice gone. Okay, thank you. With that being said, I'll move right into some of the official business. We're going to be looking for approval up to minutes from January eighteenth. So I'm going to ask for those and I'm going to also ask if there's any objection before we move into. Discussion on M S P twenty two zero zero seven. If the board is okay if we. Move some items around on the agenda to dispense of some business items that we can get through with rather quickly. Is there any objection to, we'll do the, the minutes and then we'll go right into all business for the. The M S four ordinance changes that we have previously discussed as well as just the general announcement that San Villa states. There is no new business. Things around tonight? No, thanks. Do I have a motion on the table? Is there a motion to approve January eighteen twenty twenty two minutes? I looked at them. I have no changes to make. So. Been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discretion from the board on the minutes? It would only be at this point that Zach, myself and, and you, Bill, that would be voting on them. I'll ask for some extension. Yeah. So all in favor of the January eighteenth minutes? Okay, and anybody opposed to those minutes? And is anybody abstaining? And so three in favor and two. And with that being said, I'll skip right into old business. It would appear by this agenda that we're going to be hearing from San Villa states next week or next meeting in the fifteenth. And which gets right into. The last item under old business is the M S four changes. You may recall several meetings ago. We heard from Christie, Ramaska regarding the needed changes in some of our order. Some of those implementation deadlines. The board generally had a discussion that we were of them. I think we made some very, very minor changes. And so the board said, hey, listen, in terms of expediency, let's just send this off to the town council for review. And let them handle it through their process. Generally, we thought that was okay. So it's coming back to us saying. Sounds like a good plan. However, you can't do it. The ordinance says that you need to go through your formal process. So at this point, I would ask to make sure that everybody's okay. We're going to schedule a public hearing on that for our next meeting on February fifteenth. So we're going to move forward with that. And you mean. You can object, but I don't know what it is going to do. We're going to hold the hearing. And then we'll go through with that. And after we have the public hearing, we'll discuss the next action in terms of sending it off to the council. So with that being said. We're going to go back and have a discussion on. M S P twenty two zero zero seven. Yeah, and I'll give folks a minute that you previously refused to. Take another seat, please.
They're not going on there.
What do we do? Business. Oh, the ordinance amendment, that's still tabled, right?
Um, you need to think about the public hearing.
Oh, we do need to take it when we can just, oh, sure. Do I have a motion then on that public hearing to set a public hearing to review the M S four ordinance changes for February fifteenth? Twenty twenty three.
That makes a motion.
Been moved. Second, seconded. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none on favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. Thank you. Is that satisfying?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Nope, not a problem.
Everything else is still favorable.
The ordinance amendment discussion that's been tabled, I don't envision on table in tonight. Yeah, so we'll just push that off to another meeting. All right, so M S P twenty two zero zero seven, Cumberbatch, Main Street. Last, at our last meeting. We had some discussion. We heard from. Our third party reviewer. They gave us a review on what they think we should and shouldn't do in terms of. Other proposed waivers, the application. Heard from Mr. Braun. Greg, good name. And so we heard from Mr. Braun representing applicants. Question was raised regarding the parking waiver versus variance. We did seek the legal opinion on that and happy to say, if anyone want to look at it, put it back in the plaintiff's. Purview, then so we can grant a waiver if we so choose to do that. So that takes care of that. So as far as we went forward tonight. Offer some guidance, you know. The application is pretty clear. I think we're probably at a point where we need to start going through the waivers one by one. At any questions and answers that the board might have. We move forward. Any comments or thoughts from the board? Because we can kind of. Move into that. I see Mr. Braun taking the position here. If there's something you'd like to add.
That's exactly right. And I think primarily what I was hoping to determine this evening is whether or not the board would. Follow or you know, give credence to the legal opinion provided by attorney Saucier as it relates to your authority. To grant a waiver of the parking requirement and whether or not there was any inclination to, you know, consider that request. Because as we discussed last time, should this board just unequivocally say that's not something we're going to entertain? We need to put a stopper, a pause on our process here and go to the zoning board of appeals first. And so I think, you know, first and foremost, we'd like to do that. We do also have some modest updates as it relates to the. Allegations of shoreline zoning violations are what we need to do to make certain that the property comes into compliance there. And also as it relates to the flood plain issue, which effectively is kind of taking care of itself, but we're progressing there also. And so I think, you know, first and foremost, what I'd like to do is just ascertain from the board whether or not. The, the potential parking waiver is something that should be discussed and may take place as part of this process. And then. As the, the chair has indicated, to the extent that is something we can do, then otherwise indicate where else waivers are appropriate.
Yeah, what I envisioned doing from here is again, the legal opinion, I think, put a squarely back in the plaintiff's court. So my intent is to go through all of those. Waivers. Which, you know, I want verbal clarification from you because your original application listed it as a variance. So we're going to go through, in my view, all of the wait requests for. Suggestion to the board, you know, we go through one by one, starting at the beginning. And discuss. The questions, the answers. I'm going to be honest with the board as we move forward. I have spent. Significant time going back reviewing past documentation, looking at the ordinances. So I don't really have any specific questions, but that's not to say that you don't. So I'll pause at each. Opportunity, allow an opportunity for anybody to speak. So, yes, we will be discussing the parking and. It's in our court here and the board will make a determination tonight as to what direction they want to go in after some clarification from you. Sound like a plan?
Is it?
Okay, so that being said. Fellow board members, I would direct you back to the document that we received from the code enforcement officer, which is. Literally just the copy of the waiver pages. And so the process from here is really, you know, we're technically in sketch plan review where we would be talking about any applicable waivers. Provided the waivers are granted, we would want to make a determination at this point as to whether or not the application is complete. That really is dependent on whether or not waivers are granted at this point in time. So, you know. I have went through, made some notes here and barring any objection from the board, I'll just start waiver number one. And so if you all are there and, and if we're looking at the same occupants I am. You know, waiver one, again, it was addressed in the, you know, the third party review. We also heard from the applicants. And so.
Reporting in progress.
Everything good? And so that being said, I'll start with waiver one. Waiver one seeks a waiver from South Hurwicke Code one forty seventy seven D subset. One subset J. You can evolve erosion and sedimentation control. Before I go to me, do any board members? Have any comments? Comments from the board members. I just kind of want to point out. To set the stage so that we don't catch each other off guard with any of this. There are only three members of us here tonight. Which means. Yeah, in, in order to have a vote pass, we all need to vote in the affirmative. Okay, so if someone makes a motion to accept. We all need to accept that. We all need to vote in favor. That's according to the Bible. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay.
So as we're going through asking for votes, if someone objects, that means the motion, whatever motion was made fails. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. So we're not kind of sitting here looking at each other as we move on in the process. What just happened? That's, that's what's going to happen. That's outlined in the Bible. So waiver number one. Any board member want to make a comment on whether or not the planning board will grant that waiver? Again, one forty seventy seven D location of erosion and sedimentation control. I had an opportunity. I went back and I did review prior documentation. Specifically, the third party review. And I went back even further and I looked at some emails that were sent to us prior, in particular, the one that comes to mind. And I asked for code officer to send that out. Is the November third letter from the D E P. And I think that the D E P letter combined with the. November, the November third letter in conjunction with the third party review. You know. Should give us an indication as to where we go with that. And, and any thoughts on that?
Now, Mike, are we talking about like what? Erosion, what we're planning on? What we think about it or what are you looking?
Yeah, well, I mean, if you have, so what I'm asking here is this is an opportunity for the board. To decide whether or not we want to grant a waiver.
Okay.
And specifically for erosion and sentiment control measures. The third party review suggests no. I went back and looked at some prior documentation. In that documentation, combined with the third party review. Suggests to me, in my own view, as a single board member, that a waiver is not in. And, and so.
We're not.
A waiver should not be granted. In, in, in my review of that, collectively and collectively. Collectively, that information. But again, I'm willing to go to each board member.
And if I'm not mistaken, we saw a letter from the D E P, but one of the things that came up in our last meeting too, that I was. Inquiring about whether or not that also met FEMA requirements. I know the D E P, I think. We, that was addressed in December, kind of, but.
Yeah.
Unless I'm.
Well, I, I, you know, when we get to the permit things, you know, the attorney did mention that he has some background on that. I mean. I think we all kind of looked at each other at the last meeting saying, hey, you had a permit, you didn't have a permit. What's going on with permits? You know, really the easiest approach for us at this point when it comes to the permits. And I'll specify the D E P, this, if it's something that we're going to grant, it should be a condition. And just make it a condition that. If you've asked this thing, then. You need to supply the permit to us. Whatever happened. As long as we get a valid permit at the end of the day, that's. What we will be after, again, provided the board approves. Provided we go down that road. As it pertains to the FEMA issue, there were some other prior email correspondence. Related to the hundred year flood plain. I do have some additional comments on that. And. I think that is probably better addressed in another, when we talk about another waiver. Although I'll say. When you're looking at all these. They're all kind of tied together, you know. In, in, in a roundabout way. And so. And I'll give you an opportunity to speak on that hundred year, I think, the hundred year flood plain FEMA issue.
Yeah, that's right.
The flood insurance issue.
Yeah.
I mean, is there anything new that you want to add? Because we have your position here.
Yeah, so. Absolutely. So we've, we've contracted with professional land surveyor. And we're working on the letter and that amendment.
Okay. And you met with them on site within the last seven days.
They, well, I'm going to meet with them either this week or next.
Okay, so. Okay, I'll remember that as we go forward. So again, location of erosion and sedimentation control. What do you want to do?
Yeah, my inclination is to not grant that waiver because of the. Well, like you said, the third party review and. With the Driscoll book in there, I think. Then it's very ancient and necessarily that I. Feel warm and fuzzy about waving at this point.
All right, is there a motion to deny waiver request number one? So. Been moved. Second. Any further discussion? All favor. I think motion passes to deny waiver request number one.
That's a clarifying question related to what that plan would entail.
You, yeah, you, you mentioned permits and whatnot. I, I would point to the. Point the board to the permit by rule application that was submitted as part of a, an addendum prior to the last meeting. Which had a not insubstantial amount of information as related to some of these actions that have. Be taken. And I would just indicate also that since that time, we've had several discussions with the E P and Ms. Smith, who I know. Had been in contact with the co enforcement officer here in town and collaboratively, we're working on a plan.
That's fine. So my, my preference is at this point, we haven't seen any of that. This is all well and good. So while it's denied, you're going to have an opportunity to go back and cure any defects. So my preference is that you take the denial and if you have a method that you're working on to cure that. then you'll have another opportunity to come back. Uh, that's how I'm viewing that.
So what, so for example, if, if that permit that you were talking about wanting to see, if that included something from the DEP saying the applicants have done ABC and the land is in, you know, whatever related.
Yeah, well, that would be. What I would say is when you go back and look at 14077D, take a look at that ordinance and all those subsections there, and that will tell you what you need to provide specifically. Uh, you know, I think if we take a literal interpretation of what that's telling us, provide us that. Uh, that's what we're asking. I think it's pretty straightforward, pretty clear within the ordinance.
Correct.
Uh, waiver request number two. Uh, South Hurwicke Code 14077D, 1K. Location of buffers and setbacks in the shoreline slope. As required by the subdivision ordinance, everybody could see that.
So if, if, I think, uh, Mr. Chair, if I can, I think, and correct me here if I speak uh, longer at a turn, I think to make this a little easier and understanding that, as you said, all these things are a little intertwined. I think the applicant is, is comfortable in withdrawing their waiver requests for number two, which is this next one, which is the location of all buffers and setbacks.
Yep.
That's going to be addressed in part of the DEP, uh, permit by rule application or other actions that we're going to take. And if, and if you're not satisfied with what we previously provided and you'd like us to do further work, clearly think that's in practice with it. So we would uh, for that one, we'd also withdraw the request. Um, I, I, I don't know if it's appropriate to withdraw the request for the stormwater management plan, uh, as this property is of, of such a small size.
To, you know, why don't we go through these? Here's my, my preference for moving this forward again. This is all, all, you know, and then you've had these conversations between the last meeting and tonight. You'll have an opportunity to cure because I think perhaps as we talk, you know, uh, waiver request on, you know, number two, you know, while you may want to withdraw it, there's some significance here in my view as to why this should not be granted to begin with. While you're working on, again, a lot of these items being interconnected, you know, the flood map issue, the hundred year floodplain. I'm well aware of the FEMA process and the map process that's gone on for more than over five years. Uh, it's been ongoing and I don't see it coming to an end. Uh, you know, and you made the statement at the last time that on the new maps, that floodplain issue is taken care of. I understand that, but the decisions that we're going to make can't be based on what's, what could or what's going to happen or what if. So again, depending on where the board goes with this, if the waiver is granted or not, you know, that, that hundred year floodplain is important, uh, because it establishes, and I'm happy to hear that you license with a, a surveyor because that's important from the, the hundred year floodplain as it pertains to the resource protection zone. There's really three things going on here. You have shoreline protection, you have the zoning in and of itself that we want to threat. You have the shoreline slope overlay. There's also another overlay and that's the, the resource protection. And that resource protection and why it's important is because depending on where that resource protection comes up, may or may not encompass portions or all of your pieces of property. And if it's deemed to be resource protection, the use that they're requesting is simply not allowed into the ordinance. Which drastically changes your approach here. Uh, and so that's why that's important. So a waiver should not be granted. Uh, whether, you know, the ability for you to withdraw now, I would prefer that the board continue to move forward, uh, and act on this particular waiver. I'm happy to ask any questions.
I'm just wondering if, if, uh, procedurally, we need to speak to the waivers that have been presented to us. You know, you may decide to withdraw, but we might have to procedurally do that. Do you recall?
I think you're doing the right thing.
Yeah, I think so.
It's a procedural issue as well. Understood that you're going to be mitigating or it'll be addressed, but I think.
I mean, I have to look at that. My preference is to move forward one by one and go through this year. We owe this to, to the applicants at this point.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So just to go on clear, um, we shouldn't entertain or suggest withdrawal of any waiver request here.
I, I, I think you would have an opportunity after we make app, uh, take action on this. You would have the ability to cure the, the, the defect and that defect would be, we're going to withdraw.
Just looking to speed it along.
Yeah.
And, and you know, we got to meet these things rather than talking about each one. If it's not relevant, we can just say, you know, we understand and we should look at the, uh, ordinance and we'll go back and get.
Yep, and, and so, um, based on this conversation, um, in, in, including and incorporating the items that I just mentioned about why the, the importance of buffers and setbacks, particularly in the shoreline slope as it pertains to the resource protection. I wouldn't be inclined to waive this requirement. Yeah, I'm only one.
I don't have any strong, in either way, so.
Okay, yeah. Uh, is there a motion?
They're moved.
To not waive, to not grant the waiver, uh, for, uh, identified as waiver number two. It's been moved. Seconded, and any further conversation? Okay, no, uh, all in favor?
Right.
Okay, the motion passes to not grant the waiver. Waiver number three. This is the stormwater management, main chapter 500, the EP staff. So reviewing the third party, uh, review, just trying to coordinate my notes that would here. I think if we were to just condition any approval on the receipt of the necessary permits, I think would satisfy the role of the planning board. Uh, you don't do the permit. You're not, that's, so I would be fine waiving this, provided that uh, the condition be placed on the, on the, uh, the application that we need to have all those permits in place prior to being issued. Uh, I see those as being really kind of intertwined. I don't really want to get into the weeds on the specific permits. Any conversation? Is there, uh, a, uh, motion for waiver request number three?
And originally, we do, um, waive. So approve waiver number three with a condition in the appropriate promise.
Uh, seconded.
Okay, uh, any further conversation? All in favor? Okay, motion passes. Waiver request number four. Waiver request number four, deal with 14077D and erosion and sedimentation control plan. This is very somewhat similar to, I believe, is rate waiver request number one. My own take is based on the third party review and further review of prior documentation that we treat this the same as waiver number one.
If, if I just may, uh, in support of the waiver request, um, you know, in, in the way that it's written by the third party reviewer, this is sort of a, a, you know, post project, right? What, what he suggests here is that the, the, uh, the control plan should have been adopted or put into place prior to anything being done to the property. Um, clearly we're past that and we're looking at after the fact permits now, right? And so what I might ask is that rather than just deny the waiver, uh, straight out, that we similarly condition it upon receipt of the other relative DEP permits like we've done with, uh, request number three.
Well, I understand what you're trying to do. Um, I would suggest to the board that, well, what he's saying is partially correct in the sense that work has already occurred. The bottom line is, if you go back, look at the November 3rd letter as well as the other work that's occurring. I think it would be incumbent upon this board to secure, uh, some further documentation, uh, on, in terms of the intent of how they're going to con- uh, cure this issue in an ongoing basis. What, what's happened has happened. Uh, however, it doesn't mean, you know, I don't know what work has been done or what hasn't been done and to what extent. But we do know that more work is going to be done. We know from that November 3rd letter. Uh, and I mean, if you drive by, you can, you can see the brook is pretty steep. Uh, we heard in the November 3rd letter that the methods that were put in place really don't constitute bona fide erosion control. Uh, and so, um, based on those two, you know, things, even moving forward, uh, I think, you know, again, what's happened has happened. Looking forward, I'm not comfortable myself waiving that.
Yeah, and my, my thought was, if we're going to deny the first waiver and, uh, that requires seventy four measures, we'd want to see a plan that we're going to make in place. So it kind of seem to go hand in hand.
And if I may, just to clarify the record and preserve any rights, um, do I take it to mean that the board is interpreting that November 3rd letter that it's referenced several times here as a statement of fact?
No, what you can interpret is the board is taking a strict, strict interpretation of the ordinance and your disagreement with that and why you're asking for a waiver, uh, we're not, I'm not agreeing, uh, that you were disagreement, is correct. So we're taking an interpretation of the ordinance that says you need to provide this documentation. And based on the collective information, I'm at a point where I'm saying collectively, uh, I don't think we're in a position to waive that. And let's go back and have a strict interpretation of what the ordinance suggests.
I, I bet, yeah, given the geometry of this site, I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we pay attention to these issues, should have done right so that the community and your facility, your, the, the business you want to have there is, is safe and, and available for all. And we, the, the email you're referring to, it's from Jeff Kallman, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we run over that.
Yeah.
So the email from Jeff Kallman, I believe the part you're referring to is where he says, this should not be considered permanently stabilized.
Yep, again, uh, I'm looking at all of that.
For is, yeah, someone to say that, um, the land is permanently stabilized.
Yeah, and we're going to want a licensed engineer and most likely landscape professionals that can tell us what constitutes, uh, you know, uh, permanently stabilized. Uh, I don't see that anywhere. And so, uh, this isn't a question and answer right now.
We need to know what professionally.
Yeah, I believe you, yeah, I believe, yeah, I believe the ordinance really specified licensed landscape architect. Uh, in terms of the level of plans, and I think you could go back and look at all the particular ordinances or the, the sections that will tell you in there, who you need to engage for that particular subsection.
Correct.
Okay, and so, um, what's the board want to do with waiver request number four?
I move motion to be not through the waiver number four.
Okay, so you're moving to deny waiver request number four?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor of the denial? Okay. Waiver request number five. 14077D, uh, two subset D. Existing and proposed topography at a minimum of five foot contours. You can all read it for yourself. The applicant's aware of, uh, the provision being requested. So as I mentioned prior, um, in my view, you know, um, we, we know through the applicant and the written documentation that this is within the hundred year floodplain. And, you know, this is really specifically addressed in my review. Uh, uh, this is my review, uh, saying that there are not other sections that pertain to this. Uh, 110 dash 183B, uh, that's the shoreline zipping ordinance. And that's where it talks about the hundred year floodplain. And again, uh, looking at the collective information before us, you know, that is important. Understand where this piece of property is in relation to the, the hundred year floodplain. Because again, if we don't engage, you know, a licensed surveyor to give us some elevations and where this building is in relation to this. Uh, again, all or portions of this particular piece of property, I don't really know if it's all or some. Uh, and if it puts it into that hundred year floodplain, floodplain, the resource protection, uh, the zoning ordinance does not allow this particular use to move forward. Which would have a, an ad, which could have an impact on how they present that application to us. So I think that's a critical piece of information uh, that we do need to have. Again, in, in my review, not saying that it's exhaustive or that it constitutes a complete and utter review of the ordinances. Uh, again, I reviewed the shoreline zoning ordinance multiple times in relation to this. So any other further comments from the board?
If, if I may interject, or, so this, this waiver request, uh, does have, you know, several parts to it, right? Uh, so the first, uh, is as it relates to, uh, the, uh, proposed topography, uh, and, uh, what we might have for contours and, uh, you know, layout of the land, which I think we've already provided to the PBR, but I understand that you don't want to waive that. However, it also indicates or discusses a soil map based on New York County Soil Survey, which is another portion of this specific request, uh, and a high intensity soil map verified soil scientist.
Okay, fair enough.
Note that the third party, uh, indicated that those last two things were required.
Sure, and, and you know what? Thanks for bringing that up because I, I, I would be okay waiving the high intensity soil survey. This is, you know, uh, this is uh, not like a, you know, a very large subdivision that we're dealing with now, where we would actually need to require that. I think a submittal of the soil and water map or the soil maps that are usually obtainable would be sufficient. Uh, so, you know, if the board is so inclined to deny the waiver, I would say it needs to be denied in part.
And, and.
Yeah, yeah, and recognizing and, and say that, that we're okay with, uh, waiving the portion related to the high intensity soil survey. Um, I can go along with that.
Could we also condition this, uh, uh, request, uh, upon the, uh, a payment of, uh, from the, uh,
Oh, yeah. No, no, I think the best thing at this point would be for it to deny it. Again, like everything else, you'll have an opportunity to cure it. If you come in and say, look, it's not a problem, but based on the information that we're dealing with today, the maps that are before us today, again, we're not going to make a decision on what if, uh, we, that's what the decision we have to make. So, uh, to Mr. Brown's point, uh, if there would be, uh, you know, uh, a friendly amendment, uh, if, was a motion made on this one?
No.
No, not yet. So if a motion is made to deny in part, uh, the request to, uh,
Require. For that request five.
Yeah, let me, give me a minute to think about this one. I think perhaps the way to do this would be, uh, to grant the waiver as it pertains to the high intensity soil map, uh, information. We're all aware of that. Um, and all other, uh, portions related to this waiver are denied. And I'll say the clear intent should be, you know, um, we need to see that professional engineer in terms of the, the elevations. I think that is a critical piece here, uh, to that. And I'm going to take a, a pause here for a minute. Jenny, did what I say make sense?
It did. It did. The only thing that, um, like you left just a small part out of when you do an elevation survey, you should also do the distance to the brook at this.
Oh, I thought that would be, like, given all the, you're going to have to meet all the dimensional requirements. I mean, that's, if you do it, you're going to have to do. If you do it, you're going to have to do it. If you do it all at once, more power to you, which is preferred. And if you don't do it, we're going to ask for it. So.
Just make sure that it's part of your.
All the surveys related to dimension that the survey is done. That can encompass all of the associated dimensional requirements within the shoreline and resource protection. And that, you know, again, the waiver is granted insofar as a high intensity soil survey. Anybody want to make that a motion?
Just clean it up and make it, yeah.
So, okay, so well, though, let's be clear, let's, let's be clear. Yeah, no, let's, let's be clear. I'll go ahead and make a motion. That waiver number five. Be denied. And that the applicant must provide a survey. Suitable for us to determine the elevations. And all of the associated dimensional requirements. To meet the zoning requirements of this particular area and associated overlay districts. Which is the dimensional requirements. And so, however, that the high intensity soil survey. Portion of this be waived. That's my motion.
Second.
Is that clear? Whether you agree or not, I'm not.
My only point. Of clarification would be. Whether. The board is going to require two foot contours.
I think in this particular case, you're going to want to include that for the hundred year floodplain mapping. I would suggest yes. I think you're going to need to show us the sufficient information that would put you within that. Inside or outside, it's right there. We, we all know that.
The, the intent of this section though would be to. Determine the exact. Location of the floodplain on the property.
Yes.
And from that. Line. Will be able to determine all setbacks.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's fair.
Yeah. Is there a second for my motion?
Exactly.
Yes, second, any further conversation? All in favor? Thank you. Waiver request number six. This is one forty seventy seventy. To be a landscape plan prepared by a registered landscape architect. Given, you know, similar to waiver five. And the fact that we're in the shoreline slash resource. Not slash in the hand of the resource protection. The information that we gleaned from the November third letter, I think should also be considered here. It is a very steep slope. I drove by, I stopped, I did not go on the property, I did look. That is a very steep slope down to Driscoll Brook. Concerning from the sense of, you know, the flow. That as a side note, if, if we move forward with this application, you know, there's some issues there if you're family friendly. You didn't really talk about fencing a lot in your application, but that's another issue.
We did.
You talked about, I saw fences against a split rail. I didn't see any further documentation about. You know, really fencing, stopping them from going in.
Right.
So we'll want to have that conversation if we move forward. Anyway, that's a side note. So similar, you know, to, you know, waiver number five. I think this is, you know. We're going to want to see some permanent. Landscaping items put in for erosion and sedimentation control, so. Again, I don't think this is, you know, worthy of a waiver, but. Go ahead.
I mean, I think our argument here is that anything related to this specific requirement is going to be addressed in other sections, right? When, when obtaining DEP permits and other approval. The, the issues here are going to be addressed and necessary documentation or information is going to be provided. What we're really talking about here is, you know, what's not an insignificant cost in having to. Go out and hire a registered landscape architect exclusively for this purpose.
Yeah, you know, again, I understand what the DEP is going to say. I understand the PBR process and what they'll tell you. You're going to tell them this. They're going to say, great, it sounds like a plan. Whatever's going on, I don't know of why you had it, why you didn't, whatever. You're going to get it again, it's going to say it. But again, then the, the ordinance. To us suggests that this needs to be done. And with further review and as we, you know, you, you may have, you're, you're looking at it in terms of the, the timeframe here. When the reality is you've only been before it's a couple times. And so, looking at all of this information collectively, you know, I'm not satisfied and I think that. It would not be in the, the best interest of the town to waive that requirement. You know, given everything going on there. I mean, there. You're. You have some other issues, you have the slope issues. And on the plan, you reference floral features. You say, yes, those will be in pots at the last meeting, but I think looking at the totality of it. We're going to need to be looking at screening and the type of screening you're looking at for erosion sedimentation control, I think is all tied. To the area, it's tied to the setback requirements tied to the slope. And I think if we would be remiss if we didn't request that.
Thank you, make a good point. So we haven't done any work on that steep slope. I want to make that clear. We haven't removed any vegetation from that steep slope. We don't plan on putting any more vegetation on that.
In a registered landscape architect can help us.
I mean, I disagree with that. A registered landscape architect. Isn't, that's not the profession that they're in.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome to disagree, but again, the ordinance tells us the direction we need to go.
Um, in my view, I think that. What appears that they want to be doing with. Our landscaping, requiring a landscape architect seems excessive to me. I think when it comes to the sediment and erosion control, what we're really looking for is. Shoring that up and making sure that that's set, that if the. Right person to do that is a landscape architect, then that makes sense that they would find, get a landscape architect to kind of. Prove that or bear that out, but when it comes to. Other landscape features, I think that it's. To me, it seems. Above and beyond really what the plan is for the property to require that. So I would be in favor of. Waiving this, knowing that under. First waiver, we are going to be doing what I think the landscape architect would potentially be doing if that's who they chose to use to. I think the question. Prove the, the sediment. And erosion control. So.
I guess I'm. Somewhat in the middle, but to me, you're creating a public space. You're going to have up to fifty people in that area. You've got a steep slope. Knowing fencing, if it's just split rail, I mean. I, I think. You and the public. You, the owners. And the public would be best served to be making sure that this is a space that is not going to be potential hazard. Whether it's from. People going between the sides of the split rail or sitting on it next to a steep edge. I think that, you know. I would rather. Take the more cautious approach. On behalf of the community.
I mean, I make a statement related to the location of the fence and how we determine that a split rail fence, in our opinion, is sufficient, but even if they walk around or under or through it. You're on a steep slope where you're going to have a lot of community members and activity and, you know, when you've got more than five or ten people, then you won't be able to see all the heads at once. So I feel important.
I think that.
A landscape features are part of the design of creating. Public space. That's, that's why I.
Ability to. I, I monitor the children.
Go ahead. I think adults have a certain responsibility to monitor their children and riding some fence on the top there. What I was thinking, by the way, what I was going to say is. Is such on the. Top of the, if we say top of the embankment, but it's going to be located back. Enough so that the land on the backside of that fence. Is. In compliance with OSHA such that an actual guardrail won't be required. So it prevents much as if you're doing work on a roof. Depending if you can, you're allowed to put a simple ribbon, a certain distance away from the edge, and that's considered fall protection. This fence is going to be located so that. Even if someone is leaning up against it or otherwise. If they're. They fall, it's, it's still going to be somewhat flat on the other side.
All right, so how, how about this? Because it seems like, you know, our, our primary concern.
This, this is really, I understand what you're saying. This is really.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying. This is an opportunity for the board to speak because. We haven't talked about this, and so.
I, I'd like to propose a, something in the middle is all I'd like to maybe suggest, and that's that. So the waiver request in, in this ordinance that's, that's quoted, you know, discusses a landscape plan and then comma, prepared by a registered landscape architect. You know, potentially, could we discuss a, a partial waiver where we would say a landscape plan to the satisfaction of the planning board? And, and so that we have an opportunity to provide something as part of the other processes that we're currently carrying out that may be sufficient without going out and having to take that extra additional step. Of retaining a professional for things that may not actually end up being necessary. And if, as we come back in this process, it's determined that, no, this isn't sufficient, we need something more thorough from an actual registered landscape architect. Well, and that's the planning board's decision, but, you know, provide us opportunity to give you something that may satisfy your concerns without having to go out and commit to that. What could be a significant cost? Does that sound reasonable?
I guess that's kind of. Where I'm falling on it is there's things that need to be taken care of. I, I think that for this particular application, landscape architect seems excessive to me. I think that it could be covered under.
Well, the, the other sections don't require a landscape architect. That's, they're going to be, it's like a different discipline, a different engineering discipline is going to be looking at that.
But I think that's the, that's the, when it comes to like the landscape portion of it, that, that to me seems like the biggest. You know, the drop off there. Making that. Safe and making sure there's no erosion and all that stuff.
You understand.
Kind of messed up. Not really, but I'm not, that's my.
Neither do I. That's my point, that's.
But they have to, they have to. You know, under the erosion plan, they have to provide that to us and. Whether that's. A landscape architect or whether, whether that's another type of architect or engineer. I think I don't really care who it comes from as long as. You know, if they have somebody that's doing the way, that waiver, and then they can also provide some insight on these things, like. I would be fine with that. When it comes to.
I don't know enough about. Feel free to make a motion if you want.
I don't know enough about all the different engineering disciplines to know whether a civil engineer could. Cover the erosion plan and then also provide some, you know.
Yeah. Things to, so I agree, I don't understand. I would. But the floor is yours if you want to make a motion.
So are you struggling with this one? Just because we talked about a lot of stuff that wasn't really. Covered in here. We're talking about fencing, we're talking about.
Yeah.
We're talking about screening and stuff like that. The application here is asking for. You know, I'm talking about floral features and things of that nature, so. The waiver as it stands doesn't really cover. The depth of what we're.
No, I think the issue here is just taking the wording for what it is. A landscape plan, they're asking for a waiver. And. Now it's a modified waiver to say prepared to the satisfaction of the board.
Yeah, okay, so I move that we. Partially approve. Waiver number six and. Do not require a landscape architect. Although I guess that's not recovered in here either. Oh, there is, yeah. Now waive the requirement for registered landscape architect to. Cover the section one forty dash M E B two. And, you know, as long as they're meeting all the requirements for the landscape.
There is second.
I don't feel like in seconds, because I don't feel like an authority to. Speak. To your proposal with have us determine whether or not it's adequate or safe or appropriate. I have other issues with the effect of landscaping, even if we have floral pots and the like. Depending on what you're putting in there. Has, you know, you don't have a discrete, we only have these types of things. You're right next to running bodies of water, which. Easily spread in bases and the like. I mean, I don't know, even within purview, I think it's best to have somebody who's an authority in these things. Follow.
Emotion.
All of that.
It hasn't been seconded, so there's.
Sorry, so I guess what we're looking for is. Some sort of landscape plan.
Yes.
So. We still want to see a landscape plan, but I think that the registered landscape architect portion of that is where I'm going to come up.
To have any landscape. Architects. Any professional or. Person of that profession. Review it. So then it would just.
I'm also, we're going to have to flex this one out. What's? You guys want to table this until the end?
That's what I was going to add.
You want a table? Okay, we'll come back to waiver six at the, at the end. Waiver request number seven. One forty seventy seventy two G traffic flow and patterns. You know. This particular piece of. Or this, not this piece of property, but this proposal. In my view, does, you know. Can be, might be considered. As a significant change in the use of the current piece of property. Now, we all know the former barber shop, I don't know how this seems. I don't think too many. Again, as proposed. The, the application. I think it was sixty people at the last meeting, we heard forty nine. Forty nine, yeah, and fair enough. So we heard it was sixty, we're forty nine for a variety of reasons. We understand. You know. I think that this could have significant. Issues down there with that. Many people. And the use is so vastly different. I think we are going to want to understand the traffic flow patterns. And then we're going to want to understand a lot of the stuff that it says there, in particular pedestrian movements. They've been very open with what they're looking to do there. And who they want to invite in. I'm having trouble getting over that one. What's the rest of the board think?
I absolutely agree. I mean, and I mentioned it last time at the last meeting, I think it's very, very important for this. Just. It'll be more activity, it's a different type of activity, so I would not move. I would make the motion. To deny this waiver.
Is there a second?
I'm still your opinion first.
Well, I'd like to have a second for discussion, though. I'll second it for discussion purposes. Go ahead, Phil.
I think one way or another, we would be looking for a study anyway.
This is saying this is a study.
Yep.
They're saying they don't. My words, they're saying they don't want to do that.
Yeah, I'm, I mean. Pretty much all. As I've been hearing. All the. New divisions, subdivisions and all these, they're really looking for studies. I think that whether it's motor vehicle traffic or pedestrian traffic, this is the, we would be looking for, so.
Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Sure, so I, what I might suggest or request is that. We provide you or be, be required to provide you some initial information at the outset and then a full waiver of any further requirements to be considered afterwards. And to that point specifically, I, I note that the third party reviewer. Indicate that it's debatable whether or not it's necessary, but that, you know, he would suggest. That we provide trip generation and proposed pedestrian count information. And so I might ask if the board would be willing to accept that lesser information as opposed to a full traffic study. As wholly outlined by the ordinance. And then depending on whether or not that information satisfies the board's purposes, whether additional information is needed or not.
This may be one of the. You know, again. The, the, the larger issue here is this is tied to the. The 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 larger issue here is this is tied to the parking. Okay, it really is, you're you're nodding yes, so we, I think we're all in general agreeing about that. I think given the totality of what it is you're looking for. While I understand what you're saying. You know, you're asking for a waiver from frankly for some pretty significant items. And. Here you're saying, while you're offering an amendment. Here you're saying you wanna be exempted from that. And you wanna be exempted from parking, so it's kinda like carte blanche. Uh I would say that again, like I said in prior. Nothing is going to prevent you from coming back and offering us. If you so choose some additional information. So if this is denied, you're gonna have an opportunity to cure that. That effect. So. Motion's been made and seconded on this denial of waiver seven. Any further conversation? All in favor of that motion to deny waiver seven? Waiver eight. Septic tanks and leach fields. You're gonna have public. Septic. That's pretty obvious on this one, I think this one could be approved.
Wait.
Yeah, could be waived, is there a motion to waive? Uh any discussion on favor, okay, waiver eight is approved. Waiver request number nine, storm drainage system. Existing and proposed. So, you know, a a couple of things here, um. Is. My initial inclination is to say okay to this. Just me. Trying to think out loud here, if. When we do the um. The survey, if that would present any adverse. Conditions that we'd have to look at. I don't know. Everybody understand what I'm saying, whereas on one hand, we're saying go out and get a study for these elevations and setbacks and give us a good understanding. You know, on one hand, common sense would say, you know, where the water is gonna flow. There's nothing there on site now, correct?
There wasn't previously, we put in a four inch PVC drain for the gutters. Um that was mentioned on our PBR, so I think.
Okay. Um, no, it changes a little bit. You know, uh, this may be one of those conditions that we. Maybe issue for conversation sake. A partial waiver. How do we issue a partial waiver? Uh, well, you know, I'm gonna, I guess I would say you're gonna have to give us something uh to our satisfaction.
A little permitting, maybe.
Uh, well, I think we're gonna wanna see the permits, but you just said you put in a storm drain for the gutters and stuff, I mean, you're in a resource protection shoreline slope that. Can have some deleterious impacts, perhaps.
Yeah, I think, I mean. Just like the other ones where we could withdraw, and in a similar, I know you're not gonna do that, but we're in a similar boat here, because it's shown on content two anyways, so.
So, I think the safe thing to do at this point would be to deny uh this particular waiver. Until uh time that they can present a plan suitable to the.
Alright, does this particular uh storm drainage system speak to like runoff into the brook, or is this kinda separate from that?
I think, yeah, I mean, would affect the book, you know, storm drainage existing and proposed. You know, again. I'd have to go and look at the definitions as to what they consider to be this, that's why I'm gonna say. To our satisfaction. You know, if we're talking about. We're 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 talking about. Are they installed a four inch line PVC? Doesn't sound intense, however. When you're aggregating rain off of the surface, I don't know where it's pulling from, I haven't seen any diagram for the sheet blow.
That's that's shown on the um. Uh PBR, there's a cyan.
Okay, see, so we don't have that. Okay, so. I thought that PBR was withdrawn, you guys said that earlier, and you're doing another.
No, not at all, in in fact, uh, we're working with D E P to, uh, we expect to have that PBR approved. Uh, we've been in touch with uh Ms. Smith. Uh, who had some prior discussions uh with the code enforcement officer. And we're awaiting uh what we understand to be a modest checklist, there's some additional information or actions. They would like to see uh taken on the property for that PBR to be approved. Uh, it's already been once uh by, you know, the process of time passing. Uh, but you know, you've done a challenge or considered, they're reviewing it, and we expect a small modest checklist of additional things to.
Mr. Chair. Also, what might be helpful to the applicants? Going forward for this, um, the town. Since um contracts with in integrated every, you know, environmental engineering, who could also help? With this one.
Yeah, so, you know. But if I deny it, or if we waive it, they don't have to do it, and I'm gonna say. I think the safe thing to do is to not deny it. And I think basically what you're saying and where you're going with the PBR, if you provide us. You'll have to provide us a plan to our satisfaction. And where I see this going is, we're kind of talking the same thing. So I think denial is in order, yeah, is there a motion to deny?
The second.
Second, all in favor? Uh, there was a blank waiver there. Uh relative to new application check checkbox six. Uh one forty seventy seven D two L R, uh, the reason is that code is not referenced, I looked over and over and over again, I don't see it, uh, so. For the record. I'm going to call this waiver ten and put that in the box, is that okay with you folks, waiver ten? Uh, and I agree, it doesn't exist, um.
Mr. Chair, taken out of the ordinance in two thousand eighteen, so it doesn't exist.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
You know, we can't hold you accountable to something that's not there, so for the record. Uh, I would say I'll make a motion to grant, uh, when I'm gonna file waiver number ten. Uh, uh, reference those uh waivers, the applicant is correct, those sections do not exist. Second. Oh, I moved, I moved that you second, uh, all in favor, okay? Uh, now I have a big issue here, my note, uh, we need to clarify this parking issue, uh, so. I just wanna have you on record, uh, we received, as I said earlier on, from uh the attorney that. In fact, the planning board does have the jurisdiction to waive the parking requirements. Uh, and so I don't think we need to have a finding in terms of uh the saying to ourselves that, oh. We give ourselves the jurisdiction, I believe it's there, based on that legal opinion from our attorney. Uh, however, you did not ask for a waiver, you asked for a variance, uh, do you, and are you asking for a waiver?
We are.
Uh, from this particular section. And so. For the record, uh, I just wanna. Make that known that their former request for variance one. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and call that a waiver request. And, um. Would you like me to number it?
Sure.
Let's call that uh very, uh, the the former request for variance. Zero one. We're gonna call that uh request for variance number eleven. A waiver, that's for a waiver, uh, number eleven. And you're not objecting to that.
You're not.
To be clear, okay, thank you. Okay, and so, uh, based on our last uh meeting here. The application, you know, for the records, that's sixty, uh, the applicant said that would be actually forty nine. Uh, and based on that, um. Is it sixteen or sixteen in fractions, what do we come up with? Seventeen, um. So you're looking for a waiver from. Let's write this down, waiver from. Seventeen spaces. Do any board members wish to make a comment? Comments, thoughts, uh, I'll throw this out there, lacking anything. Keep in mind that, you know, not too long ago. The town engaged. The traffic firms, a engineering company. Uh, the. Traffic study for downtown that. I don't remember what entirely of this term, or what it was called, it was the traffic study, part of that was looking at lights. And I think we all know from history. That part of that was, you know, in order to get lights in, the lights are gonna be put in wherever. I think probably Main Street and somewhere else, who knows, I haven't seen it, um. That, you know, parking could become a premium. Or even more of a premium. Um, at the last meeting, uh, you had mentioned. That, uh, one of the other companies, their company called Relish sought a waiver, was granted a waiver. Uh, the other one was the Pied Cow, um. Yeah, I I I called the code enforcement officer and asked what that was, you know, what were they talking about? Uh, my understanding uh is that, based on the calculations at the time. For Relish, um. They needed six spaces, uh, but they had two one premises, so they received a waiver of four spaces. Uh, um, did you find out anything on the Pied Cow? I, that was kind of a secondary issue, I saw, what about that one too? Oh, it's not highlighted.
We'll tell you.
Okay, so it was waived at that particular time. Doesn't say how many spaces, so we need to investigate the application for more to see how they came up with. That's the, no, it's the uh. The cannabis store right there. On uh Main Street, or Main Street. Alright, well, that one's kind of up in the air, but I'll say you can't base one application on what happened on others, you know, you gotta look at each one individually. Uh, on the individual facts and circumstances and make a determination. You know, uh, so again, seventeen spaces is what they're looking for here. And. But I'm gonna read my, give me a minute here just to read my notes, if I have anything that. You you clarified the parking wave. Uh, specify. And you're looking for a waiver from seventeen spaces, would that be an initial, you agree with seventeen or?
I think we have around.
Seventeen, yeah. That's all I have to like to clarify, um. What's the board wanna do with this one, uh, any thoughts? Or, it's a fairly significant waiver, uh, I don't know from historical perspective. What's been granted, what hasn't, uh, I went back and. Asked about those two that you brought up. Uh, one was waived, uh, I don't understand the context or what was being waived. Uh, one received an outright waiver. Of four, four. So again, you know, keeping in mind, you know, I guess. He, what's going on now, what do you wanna do?
Would, do you want just a few, a little history on why, like, they received that fourth waiver or?
Not relevant for this conversation right now, my deal. Uh, I don't. You know, I'm looking at the numbers, uh, so I don't want any further information, I don't know.
That, that's a pretty large addition. Uh, to parking in an area, I love the idea of having. Your type of uh of a resource and and community. Um, but I am concerned about. Just, you know. What it will mean for the the that street and all the community on it. And, uh. Assuming sixteen cars, sixteen parking spaces would be to support the establishment. Uh, that's, it seems like quite an adder to that street.
If if I may, please.
Are you gonna try to negotiate this?
No.
Can always come back and try to correct it later on.
Well, I mean, so I think, you know, the issue here, right, is that we don't have enough information. And and we, apples to oranges, and even looking at these other prior applicants and where waivers were granted. Those were unique sets of circumstances, as are these, and we have what we think are reasonable. Basis or explanations for why the waiver should be granted, right? Number spaces, how much it's used, seasonal, that sort of thing, uh, but you you've requested, you you refused our waiver for a traffic study. As part of this process, we need to to do that and get that further information. And so what I might request here is that you you table this specific waiver request number eleven. Until the board has had an opportunity to review whatever the results of that are. And at that time, you can make an informed decision as to what we really expect or anticipate. Uh, the difference or change is going to be uh to uh to the traffic in the, um, you know, what have you. So that's what I would, that's what I ask.
So, but based on your thing, you're right, we don't have enough, there's a lot of information here. And so. Like I said. You're gonna have an opportunity to rectify that, so. You know. Necessarily disagree with what you said, you're right, we don't have enough information. And, you know, until I have that information. You know, you can come back.
So just so I'm clear there, so so what you're suggesting is maybe that you you, the board would look to deny the request today is what it sounds like. Knowing it has the authority to grant the waiver, with that, we might be able to reserve our right to to. Uh, bring up or make the the waiver request again as part of this process.
You know, I don't exactly know, I'd wanna defer to legal counsel. On this one, in all honesty, uh, public board members. Uh, my inclination is to tonight deny it. And as I said. By default, the application is not complete, they're gonna have to make a determination as to what they're gonna wanna do. And whether or not they're able to cure these issues uh is up to them, and then they're gonna have to come back if they so choose to come back. Uh, at that point, you can have the information if you have it. And then I'm gonna have to defer uh as to whether or not. If we're denying something, if we're gonna be able to go back and and revisit that, I don't know. Legally speaking, I don't know how that works, because I wanna be very clear in this, I also wanna preserve the town's position in this, in the sense of. I understand what you're saying and you wanna gather more information. Uh, I think that's really dependent on if we deny it legally speaking, are you able to do that, I don't know that answer, I'm not asking for the answer. Uh, but I think the appropriate thing to do tonight would be to deny. And go get your information. And come back to see if you can cure those. Uh, various items.
But if if the legal stance is that we can't reinitiate. A request for waivers and.
Then I'm basing it on the, on, on, and you may have to reapply, right? I don't know, I don't know the technical aspects of how that's gonna work, and that's where I'm gonna defer to. Uh, the legal perspective, uh, that's an issue that the town's gonna have to work on. But as far as this, our role tonight is to approve or deny. Uh, that's really where I see us being.
As opposed to merely tabling it for.
Uh, again. If we wanted to table it, why didn't we table everything else? I think denying it gives you a clear indication.
That's why I have a very good answer for that, and that's that. Specific to this, this specific issue, right, you're now asking and requesting of us a a traffic study. Which speaks specifically to that, and we didn't even know we needed a traffic study, we had the right to request a waiver. We didn't even know we needed that until tonight, when you have denied our waiver, so.
And that traffic study will allow you to better educate yourself in terms of. How you wanna structure any proposed uh waiver request in the future. That's how I'm looking at that. And if you wanna come back and offer us something in the future, then that's gonna be contingent upon what you find with that. Uh, you know, but again, in this particular role. I'm at a point where it's approve or deny, it's a clean path forward, and you can go back and take a look at this. I'm at a point where it's approve or deny. It's a clean path forward, and you can go back and take a look at this. And make the determination yourself as to how you want to move that forward.
And this is a procedural question now for you or for the, but if we deny this waiver. We have a traffic study we expect to come forth and continue operations. Uh, are, is there a, uh, procedurally, uh, opportunity to present? The applicant to present another waiver request? Or does that happen?
I don't know.
So what's gonna happen here is any, um, waivers that get approved, they don't have to act on, right, guys, okay? Anything that gets denied, the applicants are. They have due process that you have to follow. So if they come back with that traffic study and, you know, Mr. Brown and the applicants present all that information to you. Then at that time, you guys will be able to act on these waivers.
Okay.
It doesn't shut them down.
Okay.
That's.
They'll have an opportunity, so I keep saying you'll have an opportunity to cure it as you move forward.
Of course, yeah.
And if you get the traffic study and it says something different and. You redo the waiver request or whatever, it comes up with something different, and as long as. Everything is justified and within the confines of the ordinance, I think the board will give it a fair hearing. Uh, but right now, based on the information before us, I'm, I'm not willing to move forward with a waiver or a table yet.
So your interpretation is correct. They do, they will have a, a chance to.
Yeah, we're not, we're not denying, we're, we're not denying the application, just saying the. Uh, waivers aren't granted, which means the application is technically incomplete.
That's what the name is. This waiver is not granted today.
Right.
Go ahead.
Mister Chair, I also want to remind you, you are in control of the meeting, so if you would like to take a break from people interrupting.
Yeah, but if, you know, I mean, honestly, at this point, I, I. I'm happy to call above, uh, if someone wants to make a vote in here, rather than getting in a circular conversation. Where I think this is gonna be headed pretty quick here.
I'm just looking for clarification. Sure, right. It, it, it sounds to me as though we're in agreement or. You're being advised by the code enforcement officer that we have the, the opportunity to, to make a, a further request for waiver. In this process down the line.
Yeah.
If you deny this now, we have opportunity to, to make that, uh, request again.
I, I think, you know, again, to use the terminology due process, where, you know, your application by default with all of these waivers isn't going to be found in compliance and not complete.
Correct.
So you're gonna have an opportunity. To go back and correct those deficiencies. How, how that moves forward from here. I'm sure that I'll confer with town's legal counsel on that, and I'm sure, Mr. Brown, you will as well. Uh, so, uh, where do you want to go?
I think based on what we heard today, I'm, I'm making the motion to deny the waiver there.
Is there a second?
Um, yeah, I guess I would share that can. I understand the concern on the part of the applicants in terms of. This being a pretty significant piece of this application. Not super familiar with the size of the property, but seventeen spaces, I assume would take a pretty dramatic amount of the property, so. I would second that provided. It is clear that they are able to, that we will readdress this, give more information and.
Well, I think it's clear to say, and I just want to be clear, I think it would be improper to put a caveat on that motion. Uh, the motion was made to, you know, deny. The waiver request number eleven for parting. There, I, I think. Due process would dictate that they're gonna have an opportunity to cure that. And at that point, they'd have to come back and we'll have to have a further conversation, and at that point, we may have more documentation before us.
Yeah, and I, you said that a couple of times. I just wanted to reiterate that, and with that in mind, I will second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved, seconded. Uh, any further conversation? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Uh, so that concludes our review for MSP.
We have to go back.
Just when you tabled.
Oh, hang on. Oh, that's right. Yeah, gotta go back. That was number six.
So just from a procedural perspective. I wrap my head around this because there's a couple, there's, I don't have an issue with the whole. Waiver, I, I.
Yeah.
Part of it.
So.
But then if we don't agree, then. So if we voted separately, definitely.
Yeah, I mean, I, it, it, it really depends, and, and I'm just really coming from the perspective of, and, you know. For speaking for myself, I'm not a landscape professional, you know, I like to maintain my lawn. You know, but, uh. I don't. I planted a lot of plants in my life and trebery and a lot of it has died.
I'm gonna hire it.
So again, I'm not, I'm not a professional.
As part of the, as part of the discussion. If I'm looking at the waiver as a whole, I would deny because I would like to see a landscape plan. I don't feel that the registered landscape architect is necessary, so I objected that particular part of it. However. Um, I do think that we should see some landscape. That addresses some of the issues, not just the potted, you know. And flower, flower pockets manager, so I just wanted to. Are you gonna make that a motion? I don't even know how, to be honest with you. Um, I guess. You're gonna grant in the, uh, I, no, I, well, because I don't. I'm floundering here a little bit. I don't, I don't want to waive the landscape plan. So you're gonna. I would like to waive that it needs to be done by a registered landscape architect.
All right, so you'll deny in part. Uh, you'll deny.
Uh, I don't know if that's conditionally, like, see a plan, but.
Like, you'll deny the waiver for a landscape plan. Um, which means you're gonna require a landscape plan.
Mister Chair, can I?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So maybe you deny the waiver for a registered. I mean, maybe you, um, waive the registered landscape architect. But deny the waiver for the landscaping plan, and that cleans up and takes that verbiage out.
Yeah, it would be similar to, what one was it?
I, I, I think that would be a clear. I think Jenny gave you a clear avenue.
Yes, similar to, was it five that, you know, we.
So you're gonna waive the registered landscape architect. And deny the waiver as it pertains to the submittal of the landscape plan.
Yes. That is my intention, so I move that we. Deny the waiver for the landscape plan, but waive the requirement for registered landscape architect.
Any thoughts, Zach?
Um. I, I'm kind of hung up on the registered part. I'm not like you, a, a landscape specialist. I do my own, at my own house, and that only affects me and my family and my property.
All right.
Um, this is a public space, so we have to come up with something we all agree on, otherwise it's not gonna pass.
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll second Zach, uh, Bill's motion. For purposes of the conversation, continued conversation. So there is a motion on the ground, on the, on the floor now. And the motion is to, um. Waive the provision. Uh, as it pertains to. A document being prepared by a registered landscape architect. But not grant the waiver as it pertains to providing a landscape plan. Correct, Bill?
Yes.
So that's the motion on the table. Uh, you know. I hear you. Any further conversation on that?
No, I mean, the ordinance just said a landscape, everybody landscape, uh, registered landscape architect, so it doesn't give any alternatives to that. I just think they have. An engineer. Of whatever specialty coming in and looking and surveying the property, we also can weigh in on that. I would. Do want to look at that, but. I'm just.
Fair enough, yeah, I, yeah, I, I'm just saying. Uh, motions on the table, uh, you know. All in favor of the motion to, uh, waive the, the registered landscape architect provision. Yet still require not grant the waiver for the provision of a landscape plan. Uh, all in favor of that, raise your hand. Opposed? So that motion fails, so by default, the waiver fails. Uh, the waiver is not granted.
So, and just so I'm clear procedurally here, um, you, you stated at the beginning that given the fact there are only three of you, you'd have to, uh, make decisions unanimously.
Correct.
And, and to this point, uh, that was a, a, a motion to, uh, a proven pardon, deny in part, which has been, uh, uh, voted down. Uh, I would expect that a new second motion would be made.
Yeah.
Uh, to fully di- deny the waiver. Uh, but it also seems apparent to me that it would need to be unanimous.
That is correct.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
So, uh. Given the fact that your motion failed, Bill, uh, is there, uh, an alternate motion to, uh. Either deny or grant, uh, waiver request number six. Uh, for purposes of movement forward, uh, I will move a denial of the, uh, waiver request number six.
I would second that, but may I make a comment first?
Go right ahead.
Or.
Yeah, no, it's been, it's been seconded. You don't have to vote on it, uh, so.
But before, maybe before, meaning that, uh, perhaps an alternate. To me, it's, um. You know, I would, I, I, I would like an authority. Be able to view your property, but I'll also think. This is not a big property. Is there? Any caveat that we could require a registered land, landscape architect? Limited in scope to specific items that we might come up with and we would all agree, or we could vote on?
So that'd be a condition of approval.
A condition.
That is trying to. Propose.
As a condition for approval.
Really charged by the.
Yeah.
This isn't.
Yeah. You, you know, again. For the information before us tonight.
Yeah.
Prove or deny.
Right.
They're gonna have, be able to go back and cure whatever it is that comes to us.
Followed similar to.
Yeah.
I, I would second. I just wanted to bring that.
Any, any further conversation on the denial of waiver number six?
Number.
All in favor?
Good night.
And opposed?
I'm not really fully there on either side.
Well, you gotta make an assumption, Bill. Um, you gotta give these folks.
Yeah, I understand.
Decision on what they're gonna do.
I understand.
Uh, so, um.
I will vote to deny, but I'd like to revisit this.
Well, you're not voting to revisit it. You're gonna deny it, and that's it, not to say that it may not come back in another form later on.
Understood.
Right. I mean, I think. I think we understand there's probably gonna be some other iteration.
Mm-hmm. All right. I approve. Motion.
Kenny.
Very important.
Yeah.
So I just want to clarify.
Yeah.
You're voting to deny the waiver, correct?
Right. All right, so. I think that concludes our review of twenty-two zero zero seven, uh. Jenny, uh. Think that concludes our review of twenty-two zero zero seven at this point in time.
Correct.
So the application is not complete, the, uh, waivers have not been granted. You're. Gonna have to discuss how you want to move it, how, how you want to move that forward. We're granted, yeah, 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 fair enough. Yeah, then we're granted. Uh, so you'll have to discuss how you want to move forward and see it at another meeting perhaps. Thank, thank you. All right, now let's see here, uh, now. I do notice that some, uh, well, we'll go that public comment, member comments. Uh, given this, I'm going to. Re, uh, before I move into member comments, I'm gonna ask, uh, at this point to. Uh, give people an opportunity to comment, not have, I think it's time to, uh, come here either in person or on Zoom. Uh, the applicant has left, uh, but I want to acknowledge that we did receive some letters. Uh, that. In full disclosure, uh, I have not read them yet, uh, and so. Uh, it was a lot of material given to us, and so, uh, I will go back and take a look at them, however. Uh, I just want to, I think I'm gonna thank the people who put those together. Um, and, and I will go look. That's speaking for myself, however, I don't know what the other two pointed we meant to defend. Um, is there any, uh, comment from the public, uh, on this at all? Or any other matter? On Zoom? Seeing no public comment, any public comment from here within the room? Seeing no public comment, are there any member comments? And you ladies are.
I'd like to commend the planning board on excellent review of the questions. I see dungeons.
Thank you.
Very patient.
Uh, any further comments from the public? Okay.
I don't know if it's from the board or the CEO. Is this, so I'm confused as to whether this site plan review is, is still fully active? And everything in its file carries on the next time we present to the planning board, so it's still considered part of the same sketch? Or do they resubmit? I, I'm.
Uh, you know, I think it's gonna kind of be a combination, frankly, in reality. I mean, Jenny, you can answer that, but my take is. Their application is going to have to be modified to encompass the denials, uh, and approvals for the waiver. Pretty straightforward, uh, and they're gonna have to deal with the fact that we said no. So you're gonna have to get it to traffic study. That's gonna have to be, uh, the, uh, satisfaction of the board. So yes, they can come back.
So it's still considered MSP twenty-two zero zero seven, and everything that's happening from the beginning to the end is still part of?
It's gonna be, I would imagine none of it's gonna go away. Uh, it's gonna be, the, 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 the record will grow.
Mister Chair. This is Counselor Minahan. Um, I'm just a little concerned. Um, about conversation happening without the applicants in the room, and I. I just want to make sure you guys aren't treading on, uh.
Understood. I, I think our comment period is done. Uh, I, I understand what you're saying. I.
I can't, I can't be a counselor in the meeting and without saying that I have concerns about the conversation continuing, so thank you.
Thank you. Not so concerned that the conversations are substantive enough to warrant. That, but, but point taken, I think we'll stop talking anyway. Any further member comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moves.
All right. Uh, all in favor? All right, thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned. There you go.